Okay, good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Welcome everybody back in the chamber in person. If you look at the top of the agenda, I have asked the City Clerk's Office to note that meetings are accessible to the public through Channel Four, our YouTube page, and the City of Kankakee website. Moving forward, all of the meetings will be held in the chamber so that we can provide our public access through the BoxCast, which is Channel Four for Comcast. And we will move on to item number two, prayer, which is Pastor Tommy L. Wright from New Jackson Tabernacle Church of God in Christ.
As we bow our head, eternal God, we're grateful that you have allowed us to assemble once again. Your grace, your mercy has prevailed. We come before you in need of your continuous guidance in these most trying times. We give thanks for all of your blessings. Lord, you are a great God and worthy of great praise, praise that even our lips are able to express. We are thankful for all which are serving our need, city, county, et cetera. Lord, we thank you on behalf of the mayor and all those that make up the entire city staff. We are thankful for the many that are serving the medical needs of our communities during this time of COVID-19 breakout, outbreak. And their effort has been a God sent, and their love for humanity is unquestionable. So we give thanks to you, Lord, for their heart, and that this includes all the people that are serving this city. So we ask that you continue to keep each and every one of them as they serve us. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God, and the people say amen.
Amen.
Darkness.
Thank you, Pastor. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by the City Council.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice
Moving on to public comments, item number four on the agenda. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to five minutes, and we will start with Lance Marzak.
Good evening. My name is Lance Marzak. I would like to start off by saying our freedoms and our rights are being tested right now at many levels. Until we see each other as fellow Americans, nothing will change. It's up to each and every one of us and make choices, good choices, every day. Our choices will change the world. We can change things right here in our own city. Right now, we're living in times that none of us have ever experienced. We stopped the world from turning this year, but we also have an opportunity to change it. We'll only change that world when we see each other as Americans, not as black, as white, not as political, not as left or right. As stated before, I don't look at any of you as left or right. I look at you as the leaders. People vote and complain, but will not get involved. I've known a lot of people that have forgotten what community is, but I know one thing for sure: We still have people that care about Kankakee. I am one of them. As the mayor of Kankakee, you should welcome the input from any member of the public, a business owner, or otherwise, that has invested in our town. As a mayor, you should embrace those who challenge you. I'm disappointed in your actions in the Zoom meetings. How hard would it have been to do the right thing? I would like to know, at what point does a politician forget what they actually do and they work for the people? Over a year ago, I gave a speech, great leaders, our great listeners, with the hope that you would actually listen. It was actually for you, Mayor, but I guess you didn't listen. You would rather remove me from the Zoom meeting than have me stand and observe. On the other hand, when you called a Zoom meeting, I was happy to attend it. I think it was a productive meeting. It's not that hard. Alderman Tall and Alderman Curtis had no problem conducting Zoom meetings that not only allowed public comment, but they posted the agenda for everybody to see and also attend. I don't think you figured it out yet, Mayor, but it's your actions that have created the reason I'm standing here right now. Especially when you toss people away with the push of a button, you also toss away the opportunity to get to know that person. The day you start embracing people that may disagree with you is the day we will start solving problems as a community. I have a vested interest in our city, and I'm somebody that actually cares what goes on in our city. You, along with Elizabeth, decided to push that button and remove me for those meetings. It's not as easy tonight. Why would you remove somebody who's never been disrespectful to you or disrupted any city meeting? It's not like we have an overwhelming number of people that care. You offered public comment by email, and you would read it. The only time I want you to be my voice is when I can't speak. Those are the times you should be a leader. Those are the times you should be the voice of the people, but not when you are, in fact, the person that is restricting my voice. I would not be standing here tonight if you did not push that button. Once again, how hard is it to do the right thing? How hard is it that Kankakee County allowed a way to phone in and public comment? The day you try and silence the public is the day we start losing our rights that people fought and died for in this country. Honesty and integrity should be the priority of each and every one of you. It's time we all start working together as a community, whether we agree on things or not. Maybe it's time to start hiring local firms instead of out-of-town firms. In 2018, we paid $125,000 for lawyer fees. In 2019, we paid $417,000 for that same legal firm. I'll tell you what, when I had a problem with the city before, I would walk into Pat's office, and we'd sit down and we'd chat about it. We didn't always agree, but I could do that because they were local. They cared. They were part of the community. They weren't out of town. Some of you know I filed some things with the Attorney General, and I passed out some cheats there. The question you must always ask as leaders, are we doing the right thing when somebody files that? I guess not. When somebody files with the Attorney General, the public body is required to respond to the allegations and provide copies of notices and agendas and documentation as required with the Openshooting Meeting Act within seven days. The city received the information on April 28th, and it took until May 27th, almost a month, to respond. Who caused that delay? Even the city lied to the Attorney General, and I quote, "The city council meetings, along with other committee meetings, post an agenda prior to the meetings indicating how the public can be followed." That's total BS. None, none, other than how you've changed the policy and public comment. And so the Attorney General's Office found that the city was in violation of the Openshooting Meeting Act and failed to identify any of the mediums available.
Mr. Marzak.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jimmy Lacoste, and I own the property at 293 South Skyler Avenue, and I have owned it for nearly 50 years, along with 18 other buildings, many of which I still own and rent in this community. I was shocked to learn of tonight's meeting, as, number one, I received no notice; number two, my understanding of the city ordinance has always been that the liquor license must stay with the premises. When my existing tenant notified me that they were not renewing the lease, my property, and moving up the street, my daughter decided she wanted to operate a similar liquor establishment in my building with a new image and improvements to the premises. My daughter incorporated a business entity and entered into a lease with me on the same terms as the previous tenant. In reliance on the city ordinance, I spent over $40,000 on my building in the last 30 days improving the building and its equipment. I worked with Peggy Meyer to upgrade the exterior facade. I blacktopped the alley behind the building. My daughter arranged, purchased, and got gram shop insurance of a total of $4,600. My daughter has caused her application to be filed with the city, which is accepted. She was only told that she had to change the name of her intended operating business. To amend this ordinance, to amend this ordinance midstream for a tenant of a continuing owner is to deny the application contrary to the existing ordinance of the City of Kankakee, which has been in effect for decades, and will result in empty boarded-up building on Skyler Avenue. This would not only occur on Skyler Avenue but elsewhere, since owners of properties leased and operated for liquor establishments will find no comfort in preserving their properties and maintaining the exterior appearance if they cannot rely on continuing ability to operate their business. I am fine with adding additional liquor licenses on Skyler Avenue, as it has become a lively center of activity, but my property is in the middle of it, and my rights should be protected, so this property can contribute to the success of downtown Kankakee. Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My dad just spoke, and I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Miranda Pitek, and I have applied for a liquor license for 293 South Skyler. I've been working diligently with your Assistant, Ms. Williams. She's been superkind and helped me out. She told me if there was anything that I needed to do on my behalf, she would let me know so I could take care of it. Like my dad said, I formed a corporation. I got the insurance. I redid the insurance when she asked me to change the name of the business. I got my fingerprints done. I completed all the applications. I was upset to understand tonight that there's going to be a vote to possibly amend the ordinance to have the liquor license remain at the building. That would prohibit me from having a business, and I just hope that you would all allow me the opportunity to bring some revenue to the city by leaving. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item 5A, roll call of the City Council.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Curtis.
Present.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Tall.
Present.
Fafford.
Here.
Swanson. Crawford.
Present.
Osanga.
Yeah, he's not.
O'Brien.
Here.
Gall.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Present.
Prude.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent. Thank you. Moving on to item B, department heads. Cosman.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
McGrath.
Here.
Shiel.
Present.
Pigash.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Bertrand.
Present.
Schmitz.
Present.
Hoffman.
Here.
Alexin.
Present.
Burr Watson.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item 6A, minutes from Monday, June 1st, 2020. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Alderman Lewis, you have the floor.
I shall move.
Motion made by Alderman Lewis. Alderman Tutter.
I second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Tutter. Any edits? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Item B, the minutes for June 15th will be provided at a later date. Moving on to item 7, petitions. We have none. Item 8A, we have a request from Pleasant Grove Missionary Baptist Church requesting permission to host their outreach parade on Saturday, July 25th, from 12:00 p.m. until 3:30 p.m. May I have a motion to approve that request? Alderman Tutter.
Shall move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Alderman Tutter. Alderman Brown.
Second the motion.
Seconded by Alderman Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Item number nine, standing committee reports. A, we have building and code. That meeting was held on Thursday, June 18th, 2020, and it is chaired by Alderman Malone Marshall. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We held our building and code meeting, and the bills in the amount of $4,597.47 were reviewed and approved for full council. We discussed the code enforcement staffing, which we have, we're very short in staffing in the code, and we also lost one employee due to cuts, and that was the end of our meeting. It was adjourned at 6:07
Thank you, Alderman Malone Marshall. Moving on to item number 10, reports of officers. May I have a motion to approve the bills? Alderman Fafford.
I move, we approve the report of officers, place the money in the proper accounts, and pay the bills in the amount of $481,763.20.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Fafford. Alderman Lewis.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Lewis. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Tutter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
No.
Fafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
No.
O'Brien.
Aye. Although I am staying on check number 76552 for $500 payable to Homestar Title Company.
Thank you. Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude. Ten ayes, two nays, and two absents. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 11, unfinished business. We have none. Moving on to item 12, new business. Okay, I'll defer to our attorney, Mike McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor. In reviewing the ordinance and some of the comments by the public, I would just note that this process that the city apparently has filed for, I don't know how long it's dated, what you have here is the same business and same business owner moving their business to another location within the city. They have a liquor license through the city. I could tell you, most municipalities that we represent, it would be covered by a letter to the mayor, who's the local liquor commissioner, who would just move the location of the liquor license to the new location. Here, the ordinance reads that you're eliminating liquor license number 39 at the certain, at the address of 293 South Skyler Avenue, and then you're adding the same liquor license number at a different address in Skyler. But again, it's the same business name, same owner. It's just a step that doesn't have to be taken. The only thing that is changing is, obviously, is the address of the establishment of the business. This happens all the time for various reasons. Businesses want to downsize. They need additional parking. They want to go to a bigger location. Whatever the reason is, but this can be handled quite simply by a letter from the business owner to the local liquor commissioner, who is the mayor of the municipality. So I would just make that note.
So item A is an ordinance amending Chapter 4, Section 4-13 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee by eliminating liquor license number 39 at the location of 293 South Skyler Avenue in Kankakee and adding liquor license number 39 at the location of 259 South Skyler. May I have a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage of the ordinance? Alderman O'Brien. Motion made by Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Tutter.
Second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Tutter. Roll call, please. Tutter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Fafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. May I have a motion to place the ordinance on final passage? Alderman O'Brien. Motion made by Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Tutter.
I second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Tutter. Any discussion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, ma'am. I think I don't disagree with our city attorney's comments, but based on the way the current ordinance is written, I think we propose that we amend this to tonight's ordinance to keep the current license at 293 South Skyler, and then this ordinance would just amend, add a new license at 259 South Skyler. Based, our current code, Section 4-54, says no change to a liquor license shall be permitted except to a location under state law and city ordinance that's already authorized as a license holder. So we do not already have a liquor license at 259 South Skyler. So as I read this, it would be illegal for us to make the change as presented, so I think an amendment to the ordinance would be appropriate. Keep the current license at 293, amend this ordinance to add a license at 259. That's an action that's consistent with our current ordinance. Then if we want to change it in the future, as our city attorney recommended, I think that may be an option, but for this action, I think this is really the only way forward tonight.
I think it's two separate issues. I'm going to recommend that any business owner that wants a liquor license, contact my office and schedule a meeting with me. We have to do a background check and other information, our due diligence on the owner of whoever has the liquor license. This is my first time seeing Mr. Lacoste and Ms. Pitek that came in tonight, and I believe I have a meeting set up with Ms. Pitek this week or next week to talk with her and meet with her. I don't think it's appropriate to do that. I know Alderman Curtis is the chair of licensing franchise, and he's had the liquor ordinance for several months. It did go back to the attorneys who provided some updates. I was hoping to have it on the agenda tonight, and it's not on the agenda for tonight, so our goal is to have it on the agenda for July 20th. But as the liquor commissioner, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I have not had a conversation with the, with Ms. Pitek, Mr. Lacoste, and I certainly don't want to hold up Mr., I think this is Brent Manow, who's trying to move. I don't want to hold him up from moving into the new location.
Mayor, if I would add, if the amendment would be allowed, you would be, in essence, adding another liquor license, which you don't currently have. Again, it's just, my understanding is the business who has the current liquor license just wants to move to another location. And again, under your current liquor code, that's completely allowed if they just approach the mayor, the liquor commissioner, and say that we're moving to another location. It's okay if our liquor license that belongs to our business goes along with us. And it's up to the local liquor commissioner. He or she would have discretion to approve it or deny it. You certainly would have to meet the parameters of not being within so many feet of a school or daycare center. There's reasons for denying that move. But as far as the public comments, and the woman who stated she filled out an application, that happens all the time. Most people, if they're going to purchase a building or enter into a lease and then open up an establishment, they usually do it contingent upon obtaining their own liquor license, not transferring a liquor license to them, which is also allowable by the local liquor commissioner if that is the case. But as I understand it, the case here is the current proprietor is moving up the street, and the liquor license belongs to that proprietor, and that's what's been proposed. And it's my understanding that this has been done in the past by this type of an ordinance, and my statement to the council and to the mayor is that you really don't need to take this step with this ordinance. Well, I think based on the ordinance, though, that there has to be, the site to which the license is proposed to be moved must be an authorized licensed location. In this case, that's not the case. Well, the ordinance reads that you're eliminating the liquor license number 39 at that address, and then you're adding that same liquor license number 39 to the new address. The new one, but prior to that, it's not an existing.
That's what the ordinance is saying.
Currently, right now, it's not an existing.
It currently exists as license 39.
Right, but the 259 South Skyler does not have a liquor license currently.
The liquor license is going with the owner.
Right, but right, current, right now, 259 South Skyler does not have a liquor license. So I'm not opposed to moving it to 259 South Skyler. I just think, based on our ordinance, there's a better way to do this, as I read it.
I'm sorry. Are you, so you're saying that it's tied to the address, not the person?
That's, as I understand, yes.
In our current ordinance. Like, if we went, changed it, we could move forward, but we kind of can't because it's tied to the address. Is that right?
Not the business.
Right.
Right. Yep.
Alderman Malone Marshall.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand this. So the new liquor license, you just want another number? You want to eliminate number 39 and make the one for the new address 40? Is that what we're saying here?
No, well, the way I read Section 4-54 of the city code, it says that no change to a liquor license location shall be permitted under the state or city, state law or city council or city ordinances, unless the site to which it's proposed to be moved is already licensed as a liquor license establishment. But in essence, that's what you're doing? Now, again, the liquor license doesn't belong to the property. There's background checks to the owners of the, of the business. That's who has ownership, or, you know, possessory rights to the liquor license itself. And to transfer a liquor license, if there's somebody to buy the business, that could be allowed, but it's up to the local liquor commissioner. It doesn't have to happen. So that's why in all municipalities, if somebody's going to buy Jim's Corner Bar, or whatever the name of the business is, they usually have a contract that it's contingent upon the liquor license being transferred to them, which is subject to approval of the local liquor commissioner, or they go out and obtain and apply and get their own liquor license if, for whatever reason, the liquor license isn't allowed to be transferred to them.
We're creating, we're creating the license. Alderman Curtis.
Do we currently have any open licenses right now?
Just this one that we're creating tonight.
I'm just, I'm just, what about like the bowling alley in the West Side? Have they applied for a new one since they've been closed for a year?
I don't think I've seen anything come through.
I'm just wondering, is there a way to satisfy both parties as so that we have?
I'm saying, as the liquor commissioner, that I would like to speak to the applicant that's applying for the new business. I'm not comfortable issuing a license.
We're not issuing a second one. I'm just wondering, is there down the road that we anticipate, providing they provide all the background checks and all that?
I can't speak.
Is there potential for an opening, is there an open liquor license available at the City of Kankakee?
I can't speak to that right now. Chris.
There is not a limit on the liquor license that I'm aware of. There's, there used to be, but there is not.
Well, we have an ordinance that's been out for months that is, I think, did you circulate the, Alderman Curtis, did you circulate the?
I got the email this morning, so I can circulate it, so it's going, today it's out.
Okay. Alderman Tall.
Currently, the liquor license that is out, we have what, Poppy's, that's closed, that had a liquor license. We have West Side Bowling Alley. There were two establishments on Fifth Avenue that are closed. We had another establishment on Station Street that is closed. So we have several outstanding. So, we have several outstanding licenses that are void right now. Under the new law, and according to Mr. Olson, when he was here back several months ago, if the applicant applies and meets all the requirements, we are obligated to establish a license for that person.
That is up to the discretion of the liquor commissioner. Alderman Brown.
My comment is this, uh, I think the way you're doing this is correct. Because I think the way you're doing it, you're not transferring a license. The, the person that owned the license right now, he wanted his license moved to, on the, to another location. I think that's legal, that's the way you do it. Because you're eliminating that same license that he holds, and then you put it at another location. If not, if you don't do that, then the, the ordinance also reads that basically he has to fill out a new application to do that, because there's no existing there, so he still has to go through that whole process. So, with this being said, I feel like you're doing it the right. Eliminate that and let, and establish the same license at that location. And then the people that, that want to apply for the license, they can always apply, and we can create a license, or either we can find a vacant license, because we still have to do the same thing. We still have to go and, and declare that license, uh, eliminate that license at, at any location you're talking about, whatever, uh, that license is, and then transfer it to the two fifty-nine where it's, where it should be at now. So, that's, that's the process, that's the way I see it.
Okay. Alderman Crawford.
Are we going to be giving a, a liquor license to the current place that has one now?
I don't know, I haven't met with them.
Because here you have a gentleman that just sold tons of money in there and has a, has had a license there for over fifty years, and now you're risking him not having it.
Mr. Cro- um, Alderman Crawford, people that want a license should be consulting with the liquor commissioner. Before they buy a business, sell a business, they should be consulting with me because I'm the liquor commissioner. This is the first time that I've heard of some of the comments that have been made tonight. Obviously, you all have had a meeting and discussed this. Um, but I, I have not spoken with, uh, Ms. Petak who wants to have a new license. I have a meeting with her, scheduled. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mike, back to my question, um, you're saying that based on the way our ordinance is written, that by approving this ordinance, that is the step necessary to say, okay, now two fifty-nine is an authorized site for a liquor license, is that right? It, it's the facility or the, the business, No Dogs, I think is the, the name of the, the business. No Dogs is moving up the street. Right. No Dogs is, and the owners, whoever they are, at, at some point, they passed the background check and did their fingerprints, and their, their liquor license was approved by whoever the liquor commissioner was at the time, and they're just moving. It, it's as simple as the liquor license is under their name, their business, i- it's not the address. It's, i- it's their business, it's just like a car dealership.
It's their social security number.
If they were moving to another location, that car dealership has, you know, a license to operate as a car dealership if they moved across the street.
But, yeah, and I understand that, but our license, our ordinance, section four dash fifty-four specifically says there shall be no change in location for a liquor license but for, uh...
We're creating the location in this.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. I guess, is that your si- position that the, that we're complying with the ordinance in that we are stating that two fifty-nine, effective tonight, would, if approved, this would create an ordinance, a liquor license at that location? Is that what you?
That's what the ordinance is doing. It's recreating liquor license number thirty-nine to No Dogs at a new address, which, uh, in my review of it, I don't even think it's necessary. They could just go directly to the local liquor commissioner and say, we're moving to a new location. Is that okay? Can we move to that location? And a prudent business person would go to the liquor commissioner before signing a lease or putting money into a, a property before getting that authority to move to that location, because they might be within seventy-five feet of a school or have some other prohibition of being able to be at that location.
So, and based, so is this another section of the liquor ordinance that would potentially be revised based on what you see, like, that it?
Yeah, I'll take another look at it.
Is this, I don't think this was part of any, uh, review or any issues that have come up so far, so this might be another area where we can, uh, you know, enhance this ordinance.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor to...
I'll second it. We got a motion.
Motion second, uh, for final passage.
Well, I'm not approving an amendment, I'm not off, it's the liquor commissioner authorizing an amendment to someone I haven't interviewed.
No, no, there was no motion to, to amend the ordinance, the motion was to approve.
What is your motion, Alderman O'Brien?
I had a motion to approve, this is my motion.
To approve?
Yeah, and I had questions, during questions, I had questions, yes.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the ordinance as written on item A?
Correct.
Okay, motion made by Alderman O'Brien. Did I, what, did I have a second? Alderman Tatter, you seconded it? Okay, um, okay, we hit roll call.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Stafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
No.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
And Prude.
Aye.
We are not leaving you out, Alderman. Thank you, motion carries. And then, as I stated, anybody who is, has a business that involves liquor needs to contact my office and have a meeting with me. Uh, Ms. Petak has already done so, thank you. I look forward to speaking with you and hearing about your plans for, um, the building. Item B, ordinance amending chapter thirty-two, um, section two thirty-one, handicap parking of the municipal code of the City of Kankakee, handicap parking signs established at nine oh five South M. And if there's no objection, I'll combine that with item C, similar, ordinance amending sec- chapter thirty-two, section two thirty-one entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. This one is to rescind ordinance two zero one four dash eighty establishing a handicap parking at three thirty-three Northwest Avenue. So, if there are no objections, I'd like to combine items B and C. May I have a motion to suspend the rules, Alderman Prude?
So, move, Mayor.
Motion made by Alderman Prude, Alderman Cobb.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cobb. Roll call.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Stafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries, and may I have a motion to place items B and C on final passage, Alderman Prude? Motion made by Alderman Prude, Alderman Cobb.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cobb. Any discussion on either of those items? Roll call, please.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Stafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Item D is an ordinance amending chapter three, section three point three, adult use cannabis of the City of Kankakee zoning ordinance, approving a zoning tax amendment to allow co-location of adult use cannabis craft growers centers and transporting organizations in the City of Kankakee. Mike Hoffman, are you here? Thank you, if you can come up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this one is a fairly simple amendment to our zoning code, which we actually just updated earlier this year to address adult use cannabis businesses. When that was drafted, uh, we used a, uh, the, the city attorneys actually used a model code from the Illinois Municipal League. One of the provisions in that was that, um, a craft grower and a transporter couldn't be located in the same building. The life of me, I can't quite figure out why that was, but it was in there. Uh, and, um, we've had several applicants for craft grower licenses asked to have a transporter associated with them. In fact, they've been encouraged by the state to do that, to have both of them in the same location and just facilitates their movement of goods and, and their operations and allows for a smooth operation of those types of facilities. Uh, so, we had a public hearing on that amendment in May with the planning board. They recommended approval. We met with the ordinance committee, uh, in June. They were comfortable with those modifications. So, uh, the modification is simply to allow craft growers and transporters to be located in the same facility, the same location.
Thank you, Mike, if you can stay there. May I have a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage of this ordinance? Alderman Tatter.
So move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Alderman Tatter, Alderman Cobb.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cobb. Um, roll call, please, this is to suspend, suspend the rules.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Stafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries, and then may I have, uh, motion to place the ordinance on final passage, Alderman Tatter.
So move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Alderman Tatter, Alderman Cobb.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cobb. Any discussion on this particular item? Any questions for Mike Hoffman? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Stafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Um, item E is an ordinance amending chapter ten for parking and loading of the City of Kankakee zoning ordinance. I will defer to Mike Hoffman again, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a complete redo of the chapter ten of the parking and, and loading requirements in the zoning code of the City of Kankakee. It has not been updated since the nineteen nineties, a long overdue. So, we're updating our standards to be consistent with modern development practices and to really truly be more business friendly. What we're doing in most cases is reducing our parking requirements a little bit, still making sure we have some minimum parking requirements. But what it'll allow new businesses to do is potentially reduce their pavement, reduce their costs, uh, and still meet their needs for parking. We also provide some additional flexibility here where you can have more shared parking between different businesses if they have different offsetting hours and those kind of, of things. Uh, we are encouraging, um, the provision of bike parking for new businesses, uh, and new multifamily development. We are encouraging, um, best management practices for stormwater management, so when water runs off of parking lots, hopefully it goes into a rain garden or bioswale or something like that. We're not requiring that, but we are encouraging that. Uh, likewise, the planning board has held strongly about encouraging landscaping within parking lots. Again, not required, but encouraging those kind of things with new development. Uh, in terms of parking changes, as I said, in most cases, we reduce the requirements. Some cases, we call them the same, and a couple of cases, we actually, uh, increased them very slightly because of the type of use that's being proposed. So, for example, we've had several cases in the last year or so where we've had, um, manufacturing and industrial businesses come in and ask for a variance from our requirements, because our, our parking requirements for industrial uses and manufacturing uses were really way above normal standards for those types of businesses. We've reduced those now down to a normal requirement, so those businesses won't have to come, uh, to seek variances in the future. Um, and, um, we have, um, just really updated the whole code to make it more easy for businesses to, uh, work with the city and streamline the process. So, uh, we did have a original public hearing on this in May before the planning board. That got continued to June, um, and they made their recommendations in June. We also sent this to the ordinance committee, and they were comfortable with these revisions as well, so.
Thank you, Mike. May I have a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage of the ordinance? Alderman Tall.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tall, Alderman Crawford.
Second.
You want to talk into your mic, pull you.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Alderman Crawford. Roll call, please.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Stafford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Gall.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
No.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nays.
Motion carries, and may I have a motion to place the ordinance on final passage, Alderman Tall?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tall, Alderman Crawford.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford. Any discussion? Alderman Tatter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, after reading this, this came to our committee last month, I think it was. And, um, the concern or the question I have for clarification is that we are making it, we are making it convenient for people to do business or live down, in the downtown area. That's for the parking, correct? And I would ask that this body do the same thing, because, uh, I've been faced with this with a couple of constituents in our, in my ward. And so, if we're going to do this for downtown residents, we should do this citywide. And so, I think that it should apply citywide in terms of the parking. Because we have a situation right now where we have residential properties required to have four parking spaces for a duplex. That's two parking spots per unit. Here, we are saying one vehicle per unit. Is that not correct? That's my interpretation of what we're discussing, correct?
So, the, chapter ten addresses the entire community, but there is a provision in the new code that's being proposed tonight to reduce the parking requirement in the downtown area. For commercial development, we're suggesting that, that we no parking requirement in the downtown area because there is quite a bit of additional and available municipal parking in the downtown area as well as on-street parking. We are suggesting that for multifamily development in the downtown area, there'd be a requirement of one parking space per unit. Elsewhere in the community, the requirement would be two parking spaces per unit, uh, for, for multifamily development. Reason being, less walkable, farther out, need additional car. Uh, so that's the, really, the, the multifamily category is where there's a difference. In any kind of other residential category, whether it's R one, R two, uh, the requirements have not been modified. Those, so those are the same everywhere. But in the multifamily, there is a difference between downtown and other areas of the community.
And I think downtown, because when we did the streetscape, there were, I believe, over a thousand parking parcels, so I asked Neil to do a parking, um, what's the correct term, survey, study? Uh, we have over a thousand park, a thousand parking spaces in the downtown footprint. Um, parking lots that the City of Kankakee owns. That's why we thought it was prudent to reduce the requirement for development in downtown, because there's already so much parking available downtown. Alderman Malone Marshall, you had a floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council that in table ten dash five B, it says that a single-family dwelling, uh, two parking spaces per unit, a two-family dwelling, two per unit, a multifamily dwelling, two per unit, which means, uh, we're not considerate of the residents of the City of Kankakee. We're only considering the business, and I feel like we should give the people and the residences the same opportunity not to require extra parking. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we, Alderman Curtis.
Looking, the, uh, the downtown, it's, there's figure 10-2, that's the downtown district. So it's not based on zoning, it's just based on that square outline of the downtown.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Did you have another question or comment, Alderman Curtis? Okay, okay. We had a motion from Alderman Tall, correct? A second by Alderman Crawford. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Tatter.
No.
Brown.
Yes.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
No.
Tall.
Aye.
Safford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ball.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
No.
Prude.
Aye.
Nine ayes, three nays.
Motion carries. Um, this did go through Ordinance Committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did make the same notification there, so.
Okay. Okay. Um, item F, ordinance declaring certain property surplus of the City of Kankakee, the Kankakee Fire Department, and authorizing the sale thereof. Chief Schultz, you're here.
Yep, I think you can hear me from back here, I hope. So these are a couple of vehicles that we've had for a while. Probably been going through our fleet this summer, trying to eliminate some vehicles.
Chief, I'm gonna have you come speak into the mic just for the public. Yeah, thank you.
I can do that.
Thanks, Chief.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll start over again. So these are a couple of vehicles that we've had in our fleet for a while. Uh, they're both former shift commander SUVs. And we've probably been trying to go through our fleet this summer and eliminate some vehicles that we either don't, uh, use a whole lot or they're not really, uh, worth putting a whole lot of money into. So the '01 Tahoe has been in reserve status for a while. And the '09 Tahoe, we just recently took out of service to a major transmission issue. So the plan is to put them on a, a web-based internet site and to get rid of them. And we just had some recent success with that, so we're gonna plan to do that again.
Uh, may I have a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage of this ordinance? Alderman Brown.
Motion to suspend the rules that interfere with the passage of this ordinance.
Motion made by Alderman Brown, Alderwoman Gall.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Gall. Roll call, please.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Safford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ball.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to place the ordinance on final passage? Alderman Brown.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion made by Alderman Brown, Alderwoman Gall.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Gall. Any discussion on these items? Alderman Crawford.
When we, uh, sell something from a department like that, does that money go back into the general fund or does it go into their department's account?
Elizabeth, could you confirm? Oh, I didn't realize you didn't have a mic.
Alderman, historically, that money just goes back into the general fund. Yeah.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Safford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ball.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Elizabeth, I just want to confirm, we usually purchase our vehicles out of capital, so it still goes into the general fund and not back into capital?
Yes.
Okay, just want to confirm. Thank you. Item G, recommendation to award the bid in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars to Kankakee Valley Construction Company for the 2020 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program. And the job number is 20037, and I will defer to Neil Pogash, our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. We held a bid opening for the, uh, City Street Maintenance Program for this year on June 9th. Uh, we had two bidders, Kankakee Valley Construction and Gallagher Asphalt. Um, as with everything this year, we're still navigating, uh, what effect COVID is having on various industries. We are seeing an increase in cost due to that right now, as well as the massive amount of work that has been coming out on the state lettings. So we're competing with multimillion-dollar state jobs as well. So we're still recommending award of the contract to Kankakee Valley Construction in the amount stated. And item 13A, further down on the agenda, is the corresponding supplemental resolution that will have to be passed to do that.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Alderman, um, O'Brien. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. So moved.
Motion made by Alderman O'Brien. May I have a second? Alderwoman Malone Marshall.
I second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Any discussion on that item? Alderman Crawford.
What was the total amount of motor fuel tax that we received this year?
Do you have that, Neil? Probably not.
What was, the question was how mu- how much motor fuel tax we received this year?
Yes.
Uh, we've been getting, bef- pre-COVID, we were getting about a hundred thousand dollars a month. Obviously, that's kind of in flux right now since it's due to the gas tax. So we've kind of seen that fluctuate a little bit, but we really don't have a good idea of where it's gonna land consistently going forward, so. Um, but before COVID, it was about a hundred thousand dollars a month. We've kind of seen it taper down to about eighty, seventy-five now, so.
Um, Alderman Curtis. Neil, you might want to stay up here.
Neil, just a quick, do you have an anticipated time? Will this be in July or is it more like August when they start the Kankakee Valley Construction will start this?
So, uh, assuming everything gets approved tonight, we'll get contracts going. Usually takes two to three weeks to get the contracts approved by IDOT, so we're probably looking about second week of August to get started. We're hoping they're done about mid-September, so.
Hold on, in case there's any, any other discussion? Okay. Um, roll call.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Safford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ball.
I have a conflict I need to abstain.
Okay. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Okay, motion carries. Um, item H, appointment. Our Police and Fire Commission, as you all know, I believe last year, um, we increased our Police and Fire Commission from three to five. Um, I'm appointing, uh, making the recommendation to appoint Courtney Bassant to the Police and Fire Commission. That will give us a full Police and Fire Commission, um, good diverse reflection of the community. Um, I enclosed her resume for your review. Um, she works for an insurance company, so she's got some background in HR and policies and procedures, which would be helpful, particularly as we're looking at policies and procedures right now with, um, some of our policies in our Police and Fire. Um, Courtney, are you here? Okay, you can stand up if you want to. Um, so, so people, I like to invite people in so people know who's working in the city and volunteering on our behalf. So if I can have a motion to approve, um, Courtney for Police and Fire Commission. Alderwoman Lewis.
That's so moved, Mayor.
Motion made by Alderwoman Lewis, Alderman Tatter.
A second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Tatter. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Safford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ball.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Courtney, thank you so much for stepping up to serve. Welcome to the city. Um, I know that you and James have been in touch. He'll follow up with you so you know about the next meeting. I think it's next week. Um, and if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to us. Okay, let's welcome Courtney, everybody. And I have to say hi to Jack. He's in the back. Hi, Jack. All right. Item 13A, motions and resolutions. This is the supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2020 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program. Neil, I'll have you come up again if there's anything to speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, uh, required supplemental resolution in order to approve the contract that was just voted on. Um, so this resolution's in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve? This is for our street maintenance. Alderwoman Malone Marshall.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Motion made by Alderwoman Malone Marshall, Alderman Cobb.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cobb. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Tatter.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Tall.
Aye.
Safford.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ball.
I need to abstain.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Motion carries. Item 14, executive session. We have no need for an executive session, therefore we have no need for item 15. Uh, moving on to item 16, city council member comments. Any, um, comments from city council? I guess I'll just go around. Um, Alderman Brown.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to tell you that the Public Safety will have a meeting in the chambers tomorrow afternoon at 5:30. Uh, the other thing is said, I want to say is that, uh, you know, there's a lot of activity right now. Everything that the police does is on a microfiche glass, so I just want to tell you, be careful what you say. And, uh, what we need to do is, uh, as Chairman of the Public Safety, we're gonna be looking at policy and safe, policy and procedures, uh, hiring practice, we're gonna be looking at, uh, discipline, disciplinary history. A lot of things that basically we never looked at before in the past would have to be looked at now because of what's happening naturewide. Uh, I just got a text, somebody, ma- I think she wanted me to put "I can't wait" on, on the agenda, and I'm still reading that right now. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on. Uh, the things that, that really makes you mad is that there was a councilman in, in Scottsdale, Arizona, by the name of Guy, Philip, I think his name. And he put on a fake mask like that and he made fun of the guy, said, "I can't breathe." And, and that kind of infuriate people. When you, when you, I don't know, when you grandstand like that, you hurt a lot of departments, you hurt a lot of people and a lot of police officers, a lot of citizens by doing grandstanding like that. Uh, we, we as elected officials can, cannot do that because everything we do right now, people are gonna be looking for us to do, have some kind of action, to take some kind of control and, and come out with some kind of results. And Kankakee Police is not gonna be any different. Uh, they're gonna be on the microfiche glass too. They're gonna be looking at their staff. They're gonna be looking at so many things. So be careful what you say and what you do because you further along than what you know. What you don't know is, years ago, this city council, uh, started, uh, clear with the police department. Well, clear, make sure your policy up to date. Some of the police department, uh, policy and procedure goes back to the seventies and eighties and maybe the nineties. And your policy and procedures are today. That's very important, whether you know it or not. Uh, your use of force policy has to be looked at. And you know what? And, and I got to tell you right now, whether you know it or not, you, they just gave us a unfun- mandate. Because whether you want to or not, you're gonna have to come up with cameras, body cameras, for police officers here in City of Kankakee, whether they want it or not. And it's not only for the public protection, it's for the protection of that officer too, so he can justify an action that might happen. It has not happened in the City of Kankakee, but I want to make it clear to you guys, it could happen. It could happen. And we want to take that precaution. And I don't know what the funds gonna come from, and I don't know how the chief feel about it, but the fact of matter is, right now, body cam is gonna have to be purchased in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Crawford, you have anything? You good? Alderman Crawford? You, you're good, okay. Alderman Tall, you have anything?
Um, there's a couple of questions that I'll look into at the next budget meeting.
To budget, okay. That is on the list for our, our wish list. Body cams is on the wish list, just so you know. Um, Malone Marshall, you have anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, thank you so much. I just wanted to, uh, thank you for making it possible for us to have our Zoom meetings for all of our, uh, council and committee meetings. Uh, we were able to continue with our city business and, uh, I just wanted to thank you and all of the, uh, chairman for allowing us to continue with Zoom and also for the updates on COVID-19.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Um, Alderman Safford, you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien, you have anything?
Few items, yes.
Okay. You have a floor.
Thank you. First item is, a week from tonight, we have our regular July budget meeting. Uh, hopefully we'll be getting close to, uh, finalizing the budget. Have more information at that time. Uh, secondly, we have, in the last few months, have had a number of requests for stop signs in the second ward. So I, uh, spoke, connected with the city engineer regarding that earlier tonight, and we're in the process of getting all the data for that. And my understanding is the plan is to evaluate them all at the same time, uh, as some of them are sort of on adjacent streets. So it may not make sense to do both, but certain requests may be granted, others may not. So that's kind of in the works. Um, I also wanted to request that in the future, I, I received, uh, Mr. Marzak's information about the Open Meetings Act violation, correspondence. This is the first I've seen of that, and it relates to the Budget Committee meeting from April. Uh, I'm the chair of the Budget Committee, so I asked that in the future if there's any of, you know, those kind of correspondence regarding committee activity, committee meetings that the members of that committee be notified. Uh, and the last one, uh, comment I have is my, I'd heard that potentially the city would be charging the Park District for police overtime from related to the fireworks. And I thought that it would be appropriate that we, you know, in the spirit of cooperation throughout the community for a community celebration, not, not do that. Um, so I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Curtis.
We will have a License and Franchise Committee at 5:30 on Thursday, and, uh, as mentioned earlier, um, the final draft of the liquor ordinance, um, came across today with an email that, to share that with the committee, so that will be going out today to everybody. So I got that emailed this afternoon.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Singers absent, Alderwoman Swanses absent, Alder, Alderman Prude.
No card.
Okay, Alderwoman Gall.
No.
Okay. Alderwoman Lewis.
No card, ma'am.
Alderman Cobb, um, excuse me, Alderman Tatter.
Yes, Your Honor, just, uh, a couple of quick notes here. I wanted to thank the, uh, the Police Department for the, uh, the work that they've been doing over this, uh, ever since we've had this, uh, COVID-19. Uh, I think they've been doing a, a, a good job. We've not had any of the incidents that some of our other, uh, communities or cities or towns have had. Thank God that, uh, I think that speaks to just the, uh, uh, I think that speaks to the spirit of cooperation between the citizens and also the Police Department, and I certainly want to make certain that, uh, that is on record. Um, in, in regards to the fireworks, there was a tremendous amount of fireworks, uh, and I, I'm certain I'm not the only one who was feeling calls about fireworks and people being up and feeling unsafe and all of that. But there were no, uh, injuries that, that I know of, but there was, uh, quite a bit of, uh, fireworks all throughout the city, and, and it wasn't just the city, it's, it's happening all over the country. Um, so, Public Works, uh, I, I wanted to, uh, take the time to thank them for, uh, getting all of the tree branches and twigs and leaves and all of that other stuff that's been drug out in the streets over the last couple of weeks. And, uh, they, they have done a trem- an admirable job, and I just want to, uh, give a shout out to them. Lastly, um, it's, this is in regards to, uh, an issue that took place our last meeting, and it was about public comments. And, uh, I've, I've not been here that long, but I've been here long enough to know that, uh, we as Aldermen, we do not make public comments from our seats. If we have something we want to say, we sign the list and we come up and we speak. Um, so with that being said, I, I was a, a bit offended that we would take that time to politicize, uh, public comments that were made from an entity who we found out actually did not make those, uh, comments. And I just asked us to, we're coming here, let's take care of the city's business, let's do our job, get done, go home, enjoy ourselves, and let's just try and be a better council. I mean, the entire city's looking at how we conduct ourselves. And I want to work with everyone, and I would hope that that same, uh, sentiment is shared with all of the, uh, all of the council members here in this chamber. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Tatter. And then last, we have Alderman Cobb. You have a floor?
Thank you. Well, it, it is, it is nice to see everybody, and the police did do a great job. I was close enough to live by the fireworks and, uh, assisted as best I can with some of the parking. Did have some complaints with neighbors, but I tried to explain to them, with all the fireworks that was going on, there's very little I can do. Uh, or the police can do. They can't be at all of the fireworks. I would like to add that the COVID-19 virus and the death of George Floyd has to reveal the inequalities of social, economic, health, and education of Black and Brown commun- communities.
Can you move your mic closer to you?
Understanding, can I take this off? Understanding a social problem is any conditioned behavior that has a negative consequence for large numbers of people, and that is generally recognized as conditional behavior that needs to be addressed. Ironically, as we were discussing the adult cannabis dispensaries for Kankakee and how the funds should be allocated to communities that have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, it appears that some did not understand what that meant, meant. I hope the current affairs of our country has given us all a better understanding. I realize that these terms may be involved or trending, fitting for today's present mood or or present societal mood, yet we cannot deny that they exist even in our own city. How do we bridge a gap for those who have been disproportionate, disproportionately affected even in our own city? The least we can do is to encourage, encourage our youth to achieve a higher education, not just in word, but in deed, and maybe come back to Kankakee and continue a positive impact on our community. Therefore, I would like to commend the Hispanic Partnership for giving scholarships to Hispanic students. However, it hurts deep down in my soul that the President of Hispanic Partnership, President Natalie O'Haga, would submit a written statement complaint through public comment objecting Mayor Armstrong giving scholarships to African-American students. We stand in solidarity with the Latino community. Our communities so reflect one another. We face similar social, uh, economic, health and education concerns. It is as if my sister was complaining about me helping my brother. I have been fortunate enough to walk practically every street in the city of Kankakee as a letter carrier, from Main Street to Sunnyside, from Fair to Cobb, and what I've learned is what makes Kankakee so beautiful is the collage of ethnicities throughout our city. Now it is not the time to divide, but it's the time to unite, not only as a people, but as a community of all races. I am naive enough to believe that we share the same goals of what's in the best interest of our city. We may also have different objectives to reaching those goals, but we must, but we must be unified on continuing to encourage the youth of our city. They are not only our future, they are also our present. As evidence of the many marches led by the youth of this city, and there were plenty, leaders need to talk to each other, not at each other. Have a private conversation, get it on, get it over with, and leave it there. I believe that we, that, I believe that when we leaders fight, the people suffer. The people are the ones who suffer, and I believe that when the leaders fight, the youth off, also suffer. Let's do it like we do it. Let's go in the other room, let, let the kids hear us, get it on, get it over with, uh, because we want to present ourselves as positive, positive images, not only to our community, but also to our youth. If we cannot do it for the youth, then what? And if not now, then when? That's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman Cobb. Moving on to item seventeen, Department Head Updates, Chief Schultz?
I don't have any, Mayor, thank you.
Chief reports he doesn't have anything. Tamora?
I don't have anything.
Tamora, and the Code Department doesn't have anything. Um, James in HR?
No comments.
No comments. Um, Elizabeth Comptroller?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, um, Alderman O'Brien, for talking about the Budget Committee. We will be looking at that next Monday night on the thirteenth. The final draft will be there for consideration, and we will also, um, be having a presentation to talk about bond refinancing, um, and the plan thereof, and we spoke about that at our special budget meeting on the twenty-ninth. Um, I wanted to speak briefly about vehicle stickers. Uh, we started that process today. As many of you know, we, um, punted that process due to the COVID situation and trying to, um, get into the right timeframe with, uh, moving target, um, for sure. We started selling them today at the old drive up on the corner of Skyler and Station. Uh, we are very thankful for the partnership that has been, um, created between Midland State's Bank and the city. They are providing an alternate location for, uh, the city sticker sales during this time of COVID, and in this location, we are able to keep both the residents and the city staff safe, and I am, um, very thankful as well for the entire city that I think it has taken to get us moved, um, to this alternate location, from the tech team to DPW, the mayor's office, communications, police, ESU and adjudication, and I've probably left somebody off the list. So multiple team members from those departments have had to assist us and to make this a successful adventure. I do request your patience. Um, we are having some transitional challenges, uh, today, um, you know, losing power was just one of those, um, but things happen and we will overcome. And overall though, um, I can't say enough about how smoothly it went when we did not have those challenges. We are open Monday through Friday, eight to four, uh, starting today through July thirty-first, all for thirty-five dollars. Those middle weeks tend to be not as busy if you have people who don't want to wait. Um, I would come in those middle weeks, that's typically how it goes. And if you have any questions, please contact me or anybody. Um, adjudication's taking a lot of our phone calls actually at this time while we're transitioning. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Mike Hoffman?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, nothing to report from the Planner, Barbie, ECDA?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to remind everybody, Census, uh, still happening, it's still going on, and we still need to count people. So right now, the city is at fifty-five point five percent citywide, but we do have some wards, some census tracts that are at thirty percent. So I need your help. Um, I need you to remind your constituents, your neighbors, uh, to be counted, and they can go to census.gov, census2020.gov. They can do it online. If they need the phone number, they can call ECDA, we'll give them the phone number, and they can also do it by mail. Tonight before you leave, we have yard signs, help us tell people to get counted. We have water bottles that you can take to help pass out, remind people to be counted, and anything else you need, you should have some materials in front of you, answer some questions, but I'm gonna come up every city council night and give you the update of where we're at, but we need to be, uh, closer to a hundred percent here. So, um, so many things that we do, all the work that you guys do that we do depends on this, so please help me rally the troops, rally the citizens, get counted. Census2020.gov, thank you.
Thank you, Barbie. Pete?
Nothing to report, this is my, Mayor, thank you.
Neil? We're in Department Head Updates. Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have just a few projects going on in the city right now. Um, the Safe Routes to School project bid opening is on the IDOT letting for July thirty-first. Um, Hobby Avenue is moving forward, we finalized the horizontal alignment, and we are now working with the ICC and beginning coordination with the railroads. Um, Brookmont Boulevard, they are finalizing, um, the horizontal layout on that, uh, V3 is, we got a high level estimate recently. The Phase One estimate done in 2010 was roughly sixteen point six million dollars for this project. We are currently at thirty-three point nine five million. Um, half of this is due to inflation, the other half is due to underestimation of costs and not accounting for any drainage work as part of the Phase One study. Um, other half, or other portions that were underestimated were rail work, um, the stormwater lift station, as well as mobilization, were not counted, accounted for. So we're still moving forward with that with V3 and trying to finalize the rail plans with CN Railroad. Um, we are, we have filed for another extension request till the end of next year in order to allow time for additional right-of-way acquisition. So that project is still moving forward. V3 is also working on the, uh, ITEP grant for Riverfront Trail Phase Three A. They have submitted the environmental survey request. We are doing, um, hydro, or they are doing hydraulic analysis right now, as well as doing a horizontal alignment. East Ridge Drive road improvements, we are currently working with Ricky Rocket's engineer and doing a lot of intense coordination on their proposed improvements for their site and syncing it with the proposed road improvements for East Ridge Drive. We've gotten a lot of inquiries from the businesses up there on the north side of the road as to what the proposed improvements will look like when we tie into East Ridge Parkway. Um, so that is moving forward. We are anticipating starting construction on that sometime in September, hopefully. Um, the East Court signage project is also moving forward. We hope to have plans completed in the next couple of weeks and submitted to IDOT, and then a bidding schedule for that will be announced. The South Skyler Bike Lane Project is also about complete and ready to be submitted to IDOT, and we will have a bidding schedule on that forthcoming. Uh, Francine Drive improvements, we will be starting the survey work next week. Um, CN Railroad viaduct work on West River Street, um, hopefully will be complete this week. There, have all the rebar, um, up on the face of the brit, on the viaduct and are shot creating it. It looks really good. I'm hoping that this will be a semi-permanent fix for many years to come. Um, and then Fast Track Grant, we are still waiting to hear back on that, um, for the North Skyler streetscape improvements. And then there's an IDOT project on the July thirty-first letting for Illinois One Thirteen from Court Street up to Indian Meadows Drive, I think it is, at the north end of Indian Meadows for a resurfacing project, and you've all probably seen the work beginning on Kennedy Drive, starting at Court Street and heading north to Armor Road. Um, it sounds like they're gonna s, um, start at the south end of that project and work their way north, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Neil. Um, Chris?
I have nothing.
Okay, Chris has nothing. Um, Steve Bertrand?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the library opened for regular service starting today. Unfortunately, we had the same problem that Elizabeth had, and we lost power, so our opening day was interrupted a little early, but tomorrow we'll be back at it. Uh, we are requiring masks for everywhere, everybody who comes in, and we are enforcing that, and I'm proud to say that everybody who came in today had their mask, and we got no, we got no complaints from anybody, so I was really proud of our community. Um, we have walk-in service only, which means we're not putting out any seating so that people don't come and stay, um, but again, the public were happy just to be back in the library, so I hope everybody comes out and sees us. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Chief Cosma?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to give you an update on the, the Fourth of July, uh, weekend. It was relatively quiet for us. We did have all one shots fired call at the Legion Park where, uh, apparently someone was firing recklessly into the river at that location. We were overwhelmed with the fireworks, like has been discussed, uh, we had eighty-five calls for fireworks, uh, over the weekend, and, uh, although we didn't have any fires or, or, uh, injuries that are known, we did have some damage, some siding and some houses that were, were damaged. Uh, in regards to the July Fourth festivities, it, it went off well with, uh, no incidents relayed to police. We did, uh, uh, flex officers' hours and have, and use officers that were working, but we still, um, had, had some overtime, which would be about two thousand dollars worth of overtime. We don't have a final number on that, but I'm, uh, processing, uh, that, that overtime for that. Um, as we, um, we are testing body cams right now with one vendor doing our due diligence, so we're, we're checking those out. Um, we're had it for a month, we'll probably have another one, at least one more, maybe another, uh, vendor also, so we get a good feel for the, the product that's out there and which one fits our needs the best, and, uh, hopefully that'd be something on the bond, uh, issue when it, that, that comes up. Um, so, and then tomorrow, like, uh, Alderman Brown talked about at our, uh, safety meeting, we'll, we'll be talking about, um, our Shot Spotter program, that, uh, the proposal that's come out, it'll be looking for approval from the committee pending legal review of the, uh, proposal, and then, um, we'll also be, we have our, both our, um, candidacy list and our promotion list expire in January, so we're gonna be, uh, ramping up our, uh, testing procedure, so, um, gonna go over what they are now, so have a discussion in reference to what the rules are right now by the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, and if there's any, uh, recommendations or any, any input into any possible changes for that. And we'll also, uh, an ongoing, looking at our policies, that's where we, we have Lexipol, so that's a system that they, their lawyers look through it and give recommendations all the time, and then we review it, uh, on a regular basis too and adopt a lot, most of the recommendations. So our policies are, are up to date to national standards for the most part, but we will be comparing them with our eight, that A-Cant Wait, uh, uh, proposals and seeing where we fit in there. I know there's five of them that we, uh, are covered by, uh, exactly, and the other ones are up to interpretation, so we gotta get some more clarification on that. And I think that's all that I have, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Did I get every Department Head? Jasmine?
Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me if I keep my mask on?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I want to take it off. Okay, I wanted to address the statement from Alderman Curtis at our last city council meeting because I said that I would follow up. That was on Monday, June fifteenth, because I said I would follow up Alderman Curtis, and I'm following up. Um, so Alderman Curtis, you read a public comment that was stated was submitted by Natalie O'Haga on June first. You said that she submitted her public comment shortly that day after three P.M. I wanted to follow up with you tonight and say that we have no records in our email logs from our IT team that, I, sorry, our IT team, that's a tongue twister, that show that our public comment, that public comment that was submitted by Natalie O'Haga was never submitted through the public comment email address that was listed or posted. Therefore, it was never received on our end. I am also not the only recipient that receives public comments when those are being submitted. There are three other people where those comments are redirected to, so none of us received that public comment that you read at city council that night. I feel that the integrity of our staff was in question when you stated that we ignored public comments, and I just want to remind everyone here tonight that we are a team. Again, none of us ever received that public comment. I then took it upon myself, because I have a good relationship with Natalie O'Haga, to follow up with her the next day. I asked her where that was submitted, and she recently gave me her public comment that I have in my hand tonight. I want to state that we had a follow-up meeting in person that week with Natalie and the Hispanic Partnership team in response to the public comment that was addressing any questions or concern. Excuse me. The comment that you read, Alderman Curvis, was not, Alderman Curtis, excuse me, was not the original public comment that Natalie had submitted. Natalie told me that she could not be here tonight, so I want to take it upon myself to read that original comment. I did inform her that I would read it. This is from Natalie O'Haga. As a leader in the Hispanic community, I am deeply concerned by your decision to eliminate a leadership position in the Police Department, just as two members of the Hispanic community were in line to be promoted. The lack of leadership positions for both Hispanic and female officers is indicative of your failure to be inclusive and equitable. We are twenty percent of your residents, and diversity demands that we be given the opportunity for positions of leadership and not repeatedly excluded. That was Natalie's original comment. Again, the comment that was read that night by Alderman Curvis, Curtis, was not the original comment that was submitted. She never addressed Mayor's African-American Civic Leader Scholarship or Kankakee United. Those comments were added by who we are still trying to figure out tonight. Um, I would like to include that the narrative was put out that the public last month's meeting at city council is absolutely false. Um, we have a great relationship with Natalie. I know Natalie and I, we have both supported each other's events. Natalie even apologized to us during our follow-up meeting. Next time, we just ask that the IT, IT team, again, tongue twister, would appreciate the courtesy of reaching out to one of us prior to waiting two weeks later to reading her comment publicly, so that we could address the situation and resolve this miscommunication sooner. It is important to note that we need to continue to strengthen our partnerships, especially within our community, and our relationships, and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Okay. Moving on to item eighteen, Mayor's Updates. No, it's Mayor's Updates. It's Mayor's Updates. Um, my updates that I sent out on Friday? Alderman Curtis, please stop disrupting the meeting. You do not have the floor. You do not have the floor. Item on one on the updates, I just wanted to let you all know, we are still under a state of emergency. We have moved into Phase Four, the Restore Illinois Plan, and I just want to remind everyone that we still have capacity limits of, to not exceed fifty people. So I want to thank everyone tonight, everybody's done a really good job of keeping their mask on, although I'm struggling with mine right now. Um, but we still do have COVID-19, um, in our community, even though, you know, the weather's been nice and people are starting to gather. I just want to encourage everyone and our business owners to please follow the guidelines. I don't want to have to take, um, stricter measures in terms of our, us being open. I did go to Family Dollar last week, about half the people that came in the store had on a mask, half of the people didn't. They did have a sign on the door to have masks on, so please, let's cooperate and work together and keep moving forward, uh, as we restore, um, our, our economy. Um, the city offices, as you all know, have been open to the public, and, uh, we are asking visitors to please wear their mask as well when they come in. We are doing everything we can to keep our employees safe and our public safe. As you all know, city council committees, um, as, again, I'm asking them to be held in chambers so that they can be broadcast, um, through the box cast. I believe we had an issue with the camera today. We had some technology issues with power going out, which is why we have this set up tonight, uh, but this will allow, um, everyone to be able to access. Um, vehicle stickers, Elizabeth touched on, I just- Vehicle stickers, Elizabeth touched on, I just wanted to remind everyone, we do not take checks for vehicle stickers. We do take debit cards, credit cards, no American Express, or you can pay with cash. The fee is $35. And there is a lot of signage. You guys probably saw, we have huge signs at the administration building, also over at the corner of Skyler Station. And I just want to thank the IT team and all the departments, our police officers especially who stood out today, and Elizabeth's department. There's a lot of work that went into this to move this operation, and we've had to be flexible and problem solvers, and I just appreciate everyone being patient. I have seen some feedback on extended hours. Elizabeth and I are in discussion about that. I want to keep in mind that in the past, past administrations, extended hours have been held usually on a weeknight, I believe a Thursday night and a Saturday. We don't want to interfere with the farmers market that's going on on Saturday either, so we're working out what that will look like, but we will have some extended hours and we'll provide that to the community. Policing, I have contacted, Dr. Willie Davis is here from the Police and Fire Commission. He chairs that in addition to Alderman Brown, who chairs our Public Safety Committee, to look at our policies. As Chief Cosma mentioned, under the eight can't wait, we are in compliance. Some of those things in our department, we already adhere to. No chokeholds, no shooting at moving vehicles. We already have those things in our policies that are covered. There are three that we are questioning, and we are just looking at to see, do we need to make some adjustments in our policy? So I want to thank you, Alderman Brown, and Alderman, excuse me, Dr. Davis, for taking the lead, and you two, I know, will be in communication with one another and follow up with me regarding our strategies. I would be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to Sergeant John Remondo, who's standing in the back and has served 30 years on our Kankakee City Police Department effective today. Personally, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You've always been very professional and kind and compassionate towards the community and any interactions that I have witnessed, and I just want to thank you. We are fortunate, we do have some wonderful police officers in the city of Kankakee, and we are fortunate that we have not had an issue like George Floyd. But as Alderman Brown stated, I am being proactive in making sure that we are addressing the issues that lead to this type of brutality in communities. I do not want that to happen here in our city. So again, thank you for being an exemplary officer. The last thing I have, I'm going to address the June 15th meeting, city council meeting, and there were some comments made tonight and public comment, this narrative about not including people. I would have you all note that prior to this administration, you could not even see a city council meeting on the internet. Our website was so outdated, it was not functional. You could not watch it on Channel 4, Comcast, because the administration did not broadcast. And you, we didn't have a YouTube channel, so to try to create a narrative that we don't include people is ridiculous. Alderman O'Brien, your comment about the Open Meetings Act violation, I was my understanding that there was still some investigation being done, that's why I hadn't told, mentioned it yet. I believe that Lauren was waiting on a set of minutes from Budget Committee, and so that's why I don't have all the information to forward everything to you yet. But I will say that the Attorney General's Office did support our decision not to give out login credentials to the public, which our IT team told us not to do. And so we followed that process and did not give out login credentials to the public because, again, the public can view city council on the internet, through the city's website, through YouTube, and also on Channel 4 if they have Comcast. This has never been an issue about transparency prior to this administration. No one is coming here complaining that they didn't have access. Now that we have access, we have all kinds of issues. So I just want to make it clear that that is a false narrative. Moving on, public comments. Public comment that Jasmine referred to from Natalie O'Hara was not submitted to the designated email, and Alderman Curtis stated that when he made the comment that she didn't submit it timely. She did not submit it to a public comment at citykankakee-il.gov, which was where we notified the public to submit comments. That notification goes out on our social media sites and our webpage. To imply that staff is not, that the staff is not reading comments, the staff felt attacked personally, and I take great offense to that. The staff have been working very hard, especially in this pandemic. And the last thing we need to be doing is attacking them. So you were out of order, Alderman Curtis, on several occasions. First of all, city council members do not read public comments from the public. Our process is that you come to city council, you sign up on the clipboard, just as the three people did tonight, and they go through, we read public comment. During COVID, when we were doing Zoom, they were to submit their comments by 3:00 PM the same day of the meeting. Never have city council members read the comments of the public. You stated that there was a complete failure in handling the city's finances, that Natalie, who is the president of the Hispanic Partnership, took issue with the African-American Civic Leader Scholarship and Kankakee United Initiative, which is to address gun violence, which is impacting 80% of our African-American males under the age of 25. We met with Natalie and several members of the executive board of the Hispanic Partnership on Wednesday, July 1st. Jasmine had emailed her the next day following the reading of that alleged comment on June 15th. So Jasmine emailed her June 16th, did not get a response, so we met with her and several of her executive members of the board on July 1st. We showed them the clip of the Zoom meeting where Alderman Curtis made these accusations. She reported that the comment she attempted to submit did not reference the African-American Civic Leader Scholarship or Kankakee United. She stated that she's been supportive of both of those initiatives, understanding that Black and Brown communities face similar barriers. As I stated, the Hispanics Partnership raises scholarship funds for Hispanic students every year. They only give scholarships to Hispanic students, and I've supported that scholarship personally. So she said that she would never have made a comment like that. Kankakee United, she has attended our events. She was at the meeting in January. She attended our viewing of Selma on civil rights and protesting. She is very supportive of that initiative as well. So I just want to be clear that we are working with the Hispanic Partnership. The city has always had a relationship with the partnership prior to this administration and certainly during this administration. We support our Black and Brown sisters in the community. Regarding police personnel, we discussed that that was a financial decision that in no way is to try to hinder anyone, and me being a person of color and a woman, I take it very seriously, opportunities, as I, this is, this is the path that I've walked in my own personal life. I know the barriers that women face and that people of color face in terms of trying to promote and secure opportunities. So I just want to be clear that we affirmed that we are going to work together and that that is a false narrative, that the Hispanic Partnership and the city are not working together. Also, was brought up that this, that our police department doesn't reflect our community, which is about 40% Caucasian, 40% African-American, 20% Hispanic. Our workforce in the city of Kankakee has never reflected that demographic. And while we are not there, it is certainly a priority to make sure that we give opportunities to people of color and to women as those positions become available. In terms of the city's finances, this body has been fully informed of the city's finances. We had Bert Olderson here in a, in a meeting who discussed in detail the audit and our former corporation council's efforts to interfere with our current audits. Alderman Curtis was on that call, raised no concerns, but chose to then come on a meeting July 15th and, and make negative comments regarding the city and the staff. So what I'm going to say also, you know, our Chapter Two of our municipal ordinance, Section 5.1 says that members of city council shall treat all city staff as professionals. Section, excuse me, Chapter Two, Section 5.1-1 says that city council members shall engage in honest conversation, which did not occur during June 15th, because comments were made against a Hispanic leader in this community indicating that she takes issue with the African-American Civic Leader Scholarship and Kankakee United Initiative. She did not make those comments, so that was a lack of integrity. That was dishonesty. City council members shall engage in honest conversation and communication that exhibits respect for the abilities, experience, and dignity of each individual. Inappropriate or disrespectful behavior to our staff is not accessible. And then the next ordinance that was violated was Chapter Two, Section 5.2-4. Members of city council shall not express concerns about the performance of a city employee in public to the employee directly. Comments about staff performance should only be made to the mayor through private correspondence or conversation. Comments about staff in the office of the corporation council shall be made directly to corporation council. So again, we are living in a pandemic right now. The staff come here and work hard every single day. They are not elected to public office. They are not partisan. They are here to serve and to make sure that they meet the needs of our residents, and they've done a great job of that. I know that many of you drive by the administration building since Elizabeth was personally attacked. She is one of the last people. Elizabeth, myself, and Jasmine are the last people to leave the office every single day. We have had deaths on staff. We have had parents now having to try to figure out how to school their children. We have people that are taking care of their parents, all of this during COVID-19. And when this started, I said that this was going to be challenging because none of us have ever done this before. We're, we're going to make mistakes. There's going to be, sometimes we don't get things right. It is not malicious. We made a mistake. The Attorney General made a recommendation, said that put on your agenda where you can view the meetings. That's why there's a correction there. If there's something that's, that we're not doing appropriately, it's brought to our attention, we correct it, but it's not done maliciously. And right now, we need to be working together, and we need to give each other some grace. So I did not appreciate staff's integrity being questioned or people's performances being attacked in a meeting. It was unprofessional, it was inappropriate, and it was rude. It was hurtful to some people. The last thing that I'm going to say moving forward, I'm going to ask that we show respect for the people that work here every day. Show respect to the staff. They work hard. If this continues, you will be called out of order. I feel like you owe Alderman Curtis, Elizabeth, and this city an apology for what you did, and you owe Natalie O'Hara an apology as a Hispanic leader to try to pit the Black and Brown communities against one another. I know there are many agendas in our community right now. People have agendas going on, but our residents are counting on us to, to provide service and to have solutions to our issues. So with that being said, the only agenda that we follow in this chamber is going to be the one that is disseminated 48 hours in advance, according to the Open Meetings Act. No political agendas, no personal agendas in this chamber. We are here to take care of the business of the city. Thank you, Mayor. Have a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Alderman Prude. Alderwoman Lewis.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. We are adjourned.